Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to call this meeting to order of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission on this date of April 3, 2019. May I have a roll call?
Daniel Henderson, Michael DiMartini.
Here.
Bill Hauck, Michael Drinkwater.
Here.
John Enlow.
Here.
John Flansburgh.
Here.
Miki Hazelwood.
Here.
John Martini. John Combs.
Here.
Dave Solero.
Here.
Mervyn Wright.
Here.
John Zimmerman.
Here.
Harry Fonstock. Thomas Payette.
Here.
Mylan Nagayan. Cindy Turcheck. Ron Penrose. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comments. It's limited to three minutes per person. And I see no public comment cards and nobody wishes to make a public comment, so we'll go on to the approval of the agenda for possible action. We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Flansburgh and a second by Commissioner Zimmerman. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is selection of the new chair and vice chair for the term of April 2019 to April 2020 with possible direction to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your staff report, I've included under previous action the succession of every chairman that we've had since 2008. And as it happens, every representation on the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission has served chairman except for the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe. So that means that Commissioner Wright would be the sole nomination if he would accept the nomination as chairman.
I'll accept.
We have an acceptance of the chair by Commissioner Wright of the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe. Is there any objection? Do we need a vote on this?
Oh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Right, congratulations.
And at this point, I'm going to turn over the gavel to Commissioner Wright and change chairs.
No, that's great. I think we'll be okay.
Okay. Want to sit in that chair?
Yeah. We'll switch chairs at the next meeting.
Okay.
I appreciate it, and I want to thank the commissioners for support. And I'll do my best to move us through the agenda and get us these topics and work with the staff. So we'll get back into the agenda, which we have. Next item is the approval of the minutes from February 6.
We need to elect a vice chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can just call for nominations.
Okay, so I'll call for nominations for the vice chair for the commission.
I'll make a motion for Bill Hauck to serve as vice chair.
We have a motion and a second for Bill Hauck for vice chair.
I'll accept.
And he'll accept? Are there any other nominations? Okay, I'll close the nominations for vice chair, and I guess we'll take a vote. All in favor for Bill Hauck serving as a vice chair for the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Bill. Okay, are we ready to roll? Okay, we'll move on then to item number five on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes from February 6 and March 6, 2019, meetings for possible action. Got a motion to approve from Mr. Zimmerman?
Seconded.
Seconded. Mr. Solero? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number six on the agenda is review discussion and possible recommendations to the Western Regional Water Commission to approve a request by the University of Nevada, Reno to readjust certain task completion dates and reallocate previously approved funding for fiscal years 2018 to 2019 and 2019 to 2020 to continue the Advanced Water Treatment Technology Demonstration Project. Jim Smitherman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last month, Dr. Pegula from UNR and Nevada Water Innovation Institute came in and presented a brief status report on this project, the Advanced Water Treatment Technologies Demonstration Project, as part of his report on kind of the overall activities of the Water Innovation Institute. What he didn't explain, and the request wasn't quite ready to go at that time, but he did explain that having completed tasks one through four, that the Water Innovation Institute is prepared for the Reno-Stead Water Reclamation Facility Demonstration Project. That project, once it's up and running, will be treating effluent to A-plus water quality and eventually ultimately injecting that water underground and then monitoring, demonstrating the underground injection type of transport of treated effluent into the aquifer. What has occurred, though, is there have been some delays in building and instrumenting the third of the three treatment trailers that will be used up there, and there are others involved in putting that trailer together rather than UNR. And so for circumstances beyond the university's control, the completion of the next two tasks, five and six, he's requesting that we push those out in time. And so they started on time because he was able to start both tasks on the existing trailers that are now at the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, but the third trailer is the one that's still outstanding. So Task Five, Treatment System Equipment Procurement and Installation, it's underway, and he's shown on the revised project schedule that that is about 50% complete. He's requesting that be moved out to the summer of this year. It was originally scheduled to be completed in the summer of last year, 2018. And then Task Six, Treatment System Shakedown and Startup, the completion has shifted to this summer, 2019, from summer of 2018 as well. So really what we're doing is truing up the timeline for the final, well, Tasks Five and Six, they're not the final two tasks, and then shifting the appropriate amount of funding, about $97,000, from this fiscal year into next fiscal year so we can use that to complete the tasks. So the overall completion date of June 2020 and the overall budget amount for the entire project are unchanged. He's just asking to shift things later in time into next fiscal year. So with that, I would turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, are there any questions from the commission? Hearing done. This will entertain a motion to accept the report and approve the adjustment and the budget adjustments.
I'll make a motion to forward the recommendation to the Western Regional Water Commission for approval of UNR's request to readjust the task completion dates and reallocate funding for the projects as described in submitted statements.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Enlow. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Motion seconded. Mr. Hauck. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is the report on 2018 snowpack and water supply. Bill Hauck, Truckee Meadows Water Authority.
Can you advance the board?
Good afternoon, fellow commissioners. For the record, I give you an update on our water plan for Nevada. So coming into 2019, snowpack numbers were actually pretty bleak. It was about 7% of average.
It was a decent month for us. We actually ended up closing out the month of January about normal conditions. On February 2, our friend Punxsutawney Phil was roused from his den and came out of his lair and did not see a shadow, so he forecasted an early spring. Well, he was about as wrong as he could be. He was about as wrong as he could be. It was anything but an early spring, and February actually ended up being one of the biggest Februaries in recorded history. It was a blockbuster month in terms of precipitation for this year in Nevada. In fact, at the NRCS Snowtail Site on Mount Rose, precip was recorded 24 out of 28 days. The Squaw Valley Ski Resort received in excess of 26 feet of snow, a new record for that ski resort. It was truly a staggering month in terms of snowfall, and many new records were set. And actually, by the end of the month, there was more than enough snow up there that both the Tahoe and Truckee Basins had already exceeded their full winter time amounts just by the end of February. So truly a staggering month, and by any measure, an above-average winter even before March began. In this map, you can see in Northern California, you can see all the basins respectively, the Truckee, Tahoe, Carson, and Walker Basins, all significantly above average as of this morning. I've noted the Tahoe Basin actually above 200% of average as far as snowwater content in the snowpack. So the supply outlook for Northern Nevada is, by any measure, excellent at this point. The snowpack, as measured on April 1, as you can see in this graph for the Truckee Basin, is actually going to be one for the records as well. Not quite as large as 2017, but certainly as big or bigger than 2011 and 1995. It's definitely one of the big ones. And you can clearly see in this NRCS snowwater equivalent graphic, you can see the black line is the amount of water content in the snowpack. That's the black line. You see right above that, or actually right on that for today, is 2011. So we are every bit as big as 2011 right now. Not quite as big as 2017, which is the pink line above, but clearly a big, big year in terms of snowfall for the Tahoe Basin and the Truckee Basin. Basically the same theme, just huge, huge winter for us. And stream flow runoff forecasts are equally as impressive for both the Tahoe and the Truckee River Basin this year. You can see in this hydrograph of Lake Tahoe, you can, first thing you'll see is we have actual, and then the lighter blue line is what's projected through the rest of the calendar year. You can see that Lake Tahoe is going to fill for the third year in a row. That doesn't happen very often. The latest projection as of this morning, I had to take a wag at it, but we're looking about 180 to 190% of normal runoff into Lake Tahoe. The early February forecasts had showed there was going to be a lot more runoff coming in than we had room for. So as of February 21, we've been doing what's called precautionary drawdowns out of Lake Tahoe, making room for the water that's yet to come. And you can see the 50% COE, the chance of exceedance, that's the best forecast. 50% chances, could be less, 50% chance there could be more runoff, but the best number right now is about 2.4 feet. So 2.4 more feet of water coming into Lake Tahoe between now and high. If you were to close the gates, right now there's about 1.2 feet of water. So we're still moving water out of Tahoe at this point. And theme is basically the same throughout the entire Truckee River system. Every reservoir in the system is not only going to fill this year but going to spill. The notable exception is Boca Reservoir, while it will fill on paper due to bureau reclamation construction work that's commencing right now on the downstream face of the dam to retrofit the dam for today's seismic capabilities. The dam's only going to get about half-full this year, so about half-storage on Boca, and the road will be closed over the dam this summer and next summer, unfortunately, but for those improvements. But a lot of water in the system, big flows, big flows at the California-Nevada State Line, at the USGS Farid Gauge, particularly, basically from now where we're at 2,500, 2,600 CFS at least through June, well into July. So big flows. And you can see here on this graph, I took a stab at these numbers this morning as well. The projections are over 200% of average, we're thinking right now, and just a huge year. In a normal year, you get about 260,000 acre-feet of unimpaired runoff would cross the state line, and this year we're looking well over 500,000. So big, big, big year. So big flows through July, normal flows then the rest of the year and likely the next three years, because when Lake Tahoe fills and we go into summer with full reservoirs upstream, we know we have a water supply for a community for the next probably three years despite what happens with the weather the next three years. And that means required rates of flow at the California-Nevada State Line, at the USGS Farid Gauge, we met. So all water rights for downstream water right holders, we met for the next three years, and we know where our water supply is coming from. And that's a great thing for the Truckee Meadows Water Authority because between 80 and 85% of our water on an annual basis is diverted directly from the Truckee River. So it was a big year. Travel over the pass was extremely hectic. Some people took to extreme measures to clear the snow off the driveway, just clearly out of frustration, but they tell us spring's on the way, right? So with that, I'll take questions.
What can you tell us about La Honton?
La Honton, just just a couple weeks ago, John, they decided they were going to start doing precautionary drawdowns as well. The forecast in February wasn't showing that it was going to fill quite to the rim, to the flashboards, but the most recent forecast showed that it was, and so they just started making precautionary releases from La Honton as well. So big, big water year on the Carson as well. And when there's a big water year on the Carson, that means no diversions taking place from the Truckee to La Honton. So all the water and all that's going down the Truckee and not diverted past Tamwah and Sparks, most of it's going right to the Pyramid Lake.
Mervyn, do you have a projection how much Pyramid Lake's going to increase?
Pyramid Lake, since January, we've recorded about 1.5 feet rise, and in 17, from the 17 runoff, it rose about 11 feet. And so based on those NRCS forecasts, we're looking at possibly another six more feet. So, yeah.
Yeah, and that's great, because in a normal year, that lake declines about a foot or so, just with a normal runoff. So you get a year like this to get an extra four or five feet going the other direction, that's huge. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, next item on the agenda is the report on legislative activities, including bill draft requests and bills pending in the 2019 session of the Nevada Legislature that may affect or are of interest to the Western Region Water Planning Commission and Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. John Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, I'm John Rhodes, legal counsel for the commission. I have handed out to you today an up-to-date staff report and bill-tracking list that lists all of the bills current as of yesterday that we are watching, and there's two BDRs that we still have on the list and 28 bills that we're tracking. That includes all of the bills that have been considered by the Legislative Subcommittee of the Western Regional Water Commission, except SB 280. That didn't get on the list, and the Legislative Subcommittee, I believe, is going to discuss that when they meet this Friday at 1:30. That is a bill that would change the definition of navigable waters. Tamwah opposed that bill. There was some indication from the WRWC Subcommittee that they wanted to go to a opposed position, and we will clear that up this Friday. The other item that I wanted to call to your attention was AB 371. That is a bill that makes a lot of significant changes to the public records law. Tamwah has a opposed-as-written position on that, and the Legislative Subcommittee at its meeting last Tuesday also recommended an opposed-as-written position. All of these bills on the current list that I gave you have been approved by the Western Regional, the positions rather indicated thereon have been approved by the Western Regional Water Commission itself, except for the two bills that I just mentioned. That would be SB 280 and AB 371. And as is the case in most years, the Western Regional Water Commission is neutral, watch on most of these bills, but that one has opposition. Also, on this coming Friday, the Legislative Subcommittee is going to discuss SB 250, which was a water rights bill dealing with water rights that are dedicated to public entities to support development and how those rights must be held in future to support that development. Tamwah was discussing, Tamwah moved to a support position on that, and I think the Legislative Subcommittee wanted to discuss that further because it was a bill that really didn't apply to this area. They didn't think at first. Tamwah was successful in getting some changes to that bill that moved them to a support position, and that's what our Legislative Subcommittee will be talking about on Friday. And if I misstated any of the Tamwah stuff, please, some of the Tamwah people jump in, and that's all I had for you today unless you have any questions.
Are there any questions in the commission? Yes, Mr. Enlow.
Yes. John, I know this came out with SB 499. What can you tell us about that? Let me look at that. It just creates a state advisory board of water resources planning and drought resiliency. And if, I haven't really studied the bill, it is an exempt bill, so it's going to get some discussion. It's got some legs, it looks like. And it's just the state executive branch, the governor's office, getting involved in water issues as a result of our last drought. So we'll keep an eye on that. But it would create that board, that's what it does.
Are there any other questions? I have a question on AB 51 on the front page. Can you share any information or insights on AB 51?
That's a technical water rights bill. I have the language I can go through here. Let's see, AB 51. The summary says, "Requiring the state engineer to adopt regulations relating to the conjunctive management of groundwater and surface water." So Section 3 of the bill would require the state engineer to adopt regulations related to the conjunctive management of groundwater and surface water. The regulations may include, without limitation, requirements or guidelines for establishing mitigation plans, the creation of a program for conjunctive management of groundwater and surface water in a particular hydrographic basin to mitigate conflicts. Is this the bill that they're referring to as the 3M bill, the mitigation, management, and monitoring?
I think that's AB 31.
So this is similar-type stuff, but it's technical things. I'll have to look up the status of that bill right now for you and report back at your next meeting. But this is generated out of the state engineer's office, I believe. That's about all I know about it at this point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other questions? No action required here, so.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the Program Managers' Report. Jim Smitherman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got in your Program Managers' Report, first off, Attachment 9A is the status report on projects and work plan items. So it's just a list of those projects that we have underway right now and roughly their percent completion. Couple of projects have been completed so far this year. That's the Bedell Flat Rapid Infiltration Basin Study. That was one that the Truckee Meadows Water Authority conducted. Positive results from that one. We have a full report on file for that project, and so that one is 100% complete. And then also, the following on the list is just the second of three installments of $25,000 to support the Nevada Water Innovation Institute. On the flip side of that page is the financial status report, and so our revenues from the water surcharge, 1.5% surcharge, it's up about 5.7% from last year, which is a good sign, and it looks like we're well on track to meet the goal and probably exceed what we budgeted, 1.47 million, by the end of the fiscal year. And then down in expenditures, we're well under what we budgeted as far as our expenditures, and I believe we're on track to finish out with about the amount that's listed under the actual plus PO column. That is approximately what we had included in the estimate to complete when we put the budget together and presented it to you last meeting. And so we're well on the track to be in the black all the way through this fiscal year and have a significant cash reserve moving into next fiscal year. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman, for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions regarding the report from Mr. Smitherman? Okay, thank you, Jim. All right. Next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding location and possible agenda items for the May 2019 Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission meeting and future meetings and possible direction to staff. Jim Smitherman.
Okay, Jim Smitherman again. May 1 would be the date of our next regularly-scheduled meeting. That would take place at 1:30 in this room. What we would have queued up for you for agenda items next time is we're going to start bringing in reports on the projects that we have ongoing that we're expecting to renew or amend agreements to keep them going forward. So those that we'd be looking at next meeting would be the Regional Precipitation Gauge Monitoring Program. That's one that DRI is doing, and these are the precipitation gauges that are distributed up through the northern part of, to points fairly far north of here, not all the way up to the Oregon border, but up into northern Washoe County. The next one is the Washoe Evapotranspiration Project. Also, DRI manages that one. That's the project where we have four or five weather stations throughout the region that report to a website that will ultimately instruct how long your runtime should be for certain kinds of irrigation sprinkler heads. The next project is Tamwah's Water Usage Review Program. So we usually get an annual report on how they did on that one with a request for funding for the following year. And then finally, the NPDS Stormwater Management Program that is headed by the city of Reno on behalf of the region, Reno-Sparks and Washoe County. That's about $260,000 that we support that program with annually for the last several years. And so we'd get a report and a funding request for that as well. So those are the four items that I have on deck for our next meeting, and I would turn it back to the commission for requests, recommendations for other items.
Okay, are there any comments or recommendations regarding the possible agenda items for the May 2019 meeting? Okay, so hearing none, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the, that we're doing here, is approving the May 2019 meeting agenda?
Yeah, the May 1, 2019 meeting agenda and location and time.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the items as given by Jim for our May 1, is that what you said, Jim? May 1 meeting at this location at 1:30.
Motion made and seconded. Motion made and seconded. And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is commission comments. Any commissioners have any comments? Mr. Flansburgh.
I'd just like to thank Michael DiMartini for his service as chairman, and certainly welcome our new chairman, Smitherman. So thank you for taking that on, and also our vice chair, Bill Hauck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming on board, Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, thank you. I guess the only comment I have is, you know, just, I had forwarded the memo to our staff and got some thoughts from them, and they were encouraging and positive, and even as busy as I am, I talked to you earlier today and probably want to talk to you a little bit more after the meeting, but I appreciate, again, appreciate the support here, and I think, you know, one of the, one of the comments from our staff was to, I think it's the first time, you know, the Pyramid Lake Tribe is chair of the commission, so as I said, I'll do my best and continue to support, you know, the efforts of the commission. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, okay, we'll move on then, staff comments.
Well, echoing Commissioner Flansburgh's, thank you, outgoing Chairman DiMartini, thanks for your service for a year, and then we welcome on, Smitherman. I look forward to working with you through your, through your position as chair, and I'm happy to hear that you got support from, from your coworkers and others out of the tribe, so, yeah, good, good news. And this is historic, this is the first time that Pyramid Lake Pio tribe has been chairman of the, of the commission, so looking forward to a good year. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more comments from the staff? No more comments from the staff, so next item on the agenda is public comments, three-minute time limit per person. Don't have any cards and don't see anybody coming forward, so we'll move on then to our item number 14, which is adjournment. Got a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.